Good morning. This is the City Council Work Session for Monday, May 3rd, 2021. It's 10:00 a.m., so we'll get started right with it. The first item we have today is the City Council applicant interviews. And our first interview is with Charlie Oswald. Would you please come forward to the mic?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Could you?
It's nice to see all of you again.
Would you state your name and your address for us?
Yes. My name is Charlene Oswald. Most everyone knows me by Charlie. I go by Charlie. And my address is 2032 Otter Pond Circle.
All right. Council, you have some questions?
I think we can start by welcoming you here and thanking you for applying. And why don't you just take a few minutes to, even though we've read your application, introduce yourself to us and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on council this morning?
Well, about 17 years ago, I came over here with my sister, and it was the first time that I'd actually seen Montrose. And I literally fell in love with it. It reminded me of my hometown where I grew up, which was Longmont, Colorado. And I made it a goal. Everyone here was having way too much fun without me, so it became a goal to get up here. And I was able to do that six years ago. And I bought my home in Otter Pond and became a member of the HOA Board there. And it just continued to meet all of these wonderful, kind, caring people. The more I learned about the city, the more I loved getting involved. And I did. I went to forums. I joined some boards. I got involved in different aspects of the city. And it's just been something that I've found so rewarding. So yes, I would like to, at this stage in my life, do something that would serve this community and give back.
So one of the issues that's currently facing council in the City of Montrose is our lack of housing. And one of the things we're seeing is a lot of interest in multifamily dwellings, apartment buildings, and so on. Could you give us a little bit of your opinion and feelings concerning that issue?
I was a graduate of the leadership class, and that was one of the issues that we studied extensively. And it certainly is something that we determined was a real crisis here. Being a service industry community, that is, having housing that meets the income level has been a real challenge. So I'm glad to see that we do have some talented developers and builders that are looking to look into that type of thing. I would be very much in favor of working however we can to create housing for that price level. That seems to be an issue that's been a real challenge.
And looking around the community itself, what do you feel would be some of the major things that the city should concentrate on, or projects, or things that would be helpful to the community overall?
One of the things that I hear in talking to people is infrastructure. There's concerns about infrastructure, and I hear that often. And I would like to see the city put more effort into streets and sidewalks and that type of thing. That's always been a concern.
What role should the city play in economic development in our community?
I think the city has done an excellent job of promoting the city. I think the new brochure is very professionally done. And I think it clearly invites people here, they see what it is we have to offer. I can see, however, where there is a need to talk to the business owners, have them play a role. I think that, I hear that from others, not that there's necessarily a lack, but I think when you are the business owner yourself, you have a better understanding of what the needs are, what you're hearing from your customers. And so I think there could be a joint effort that might be more beneficial to both the business owners and the city.
So are you pretty familiar with the time constraints necessary for City Council? And do you have any other activities or boards that you're serving on that might conflict with that time?
No, I do not.
Because one of the things people don't understand is that we do a lot more than just meet for work session and council meetings. We have a lot of other meetings and other obligations and other boards we serve on. So we just want to make sure that everybody has a pretty clear idea of the amount of time it's going to take to be on the council.
I don't have any issues with that, and I can see where that would be very important, to be more involved. I mean, listening and learning is how we make the best decisions.
All right. I think that takes care of all the questions that we had. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our next candidate, Jay David Reed. And if you would, please state your name and address.
Good morning. My name is David Reed. I live at 410 South Fourth Street in Montrose. Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for applying. If you'd just take a few minutes to tell us a little bit about yourself, your background, and why you're interested in serving on council?
Sure. Debbie and I moved here a number of years ago. We spent most of our adult life here in Montrose when I was in law school. We knew we wanted to live in western Colorado, and we used to come out and go around the western slope, and we fell in love with Montrose and found a way to move here and had no clue what we were doing, but we packed up the dogs and moved here when I finished law school. And we've been here ever since. I consider this home. It's a place I love. It's a place I have enjoyed being a part of. I'd like to continue to be a part of this community. And I think the bottom line is, it's about love of community, and that's why I would like to serve.
So I'll ask you the same question concerning affordable housing and market rate housing and multifamily housing and apartments. Could you give us a little bit of your thoughts on that?
Sure. I've been involved in quite a bit of, quite a number of housing projects, not only in Montrose, but throughout western Colorado. It's a huge need. I mean, it's not unique to Montrose. We all know that. But it's unique to us because we have to be able to provide that to our citizens, to have a decent place to live, a livable wage, and we have to find ways to make it happen. I don't pretend to have the answers, but I think it's a struggle we all need to continue to address and create the environment where citizens can, either living here now or who may come, can have an affordable home and a livable wage. That's extremely important. I think that's one of the most important things facing the city, as it is with many other cities.
David, when it comes to emphasis that the city needs to be putting on different areas of the community, do you have any feelings for what you believe we need to be emphasizing or efforts that we need to put forward from a city standpoint?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's a really good question, and there probably are a number of answers to that, quite frankly. I think the city is on the right track now, to be honest with you. I think we need to continue down the road that you guys have led us down thus far. But I do think that the more amenities that we can provide as a city, as a community, to those who would be looking to come to Montrose, the better we'll be. And I've looked at the projections of what growth is going to be like in the future, and, you know, we're going to grow, and we have to be able to address those concerns. So I think the cities, you know, and as Charlie said, infrastructure is important, and we need to maintain our infrastructure. And so, but I just think there are a number of different things that we could and should be doing to move the city, continue to move the city forward. I really can't, I can't say, I can't be critical about where we are today because Montrose has done a wonderful job. In the years that I've been in this community, this town has come a long way, and it's because of people like you who have served on the council, who have helped guide it to where it is today. And so I just think we need to continue the things we're doing.
What role should the city play in economic development in our community?
Ms. Benham, that's a good question. I think that, in my opinion, there are a number of things, a number of things that government should be involved in, and a number of things that government shouldn't be involved in that are better dealt with in the private sector. I think economic development is one of those areas where it is crucial for the city to be involved, just because of its ability to attract and do the things that would bring people in that would help to grow our economy. So I think it's very important for the city to be involved. Now, is that a public-private partnership? Is it with any other organization? Yes, perhaps, but the city needs to be a leader, as far as I'm concerned, in economic
You got another question?
As we're aware, you're very involved in our community and serve on boards and have been very committed to our community, so I'm going to ask you the same question I asked Charlie, is, are you going to be able to dedicate the time necessary to really focus on being on council?
Mr. Frank, yes. The answer is definitely yes. I just finished my tenure as the Chairman of the Board of Colorado Mesa University Board of Trustees. I'm no longer on that board. We just finished, I was on the selection committee for the President of the university. We just finished that work after three months this past Wednesday, and we do have a new president. So I'm breathing a sigh of relief, to be honest with you. But the answer, short answer is yes. I would not put my name forward if I didn't have the time to commit.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank both individuals for participating this morning. The next item on our discussion today is CDOT revitalization of Main Street Grant Program
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I'm just sharing my screen here. I hope everyone can see that on Zoom. Can everyone see the image of Main Street, West Main Street? Excellent. So I'm coming before you today, before council, to present to you a request that will be on tomorrow night's agenda to apply for the CDOT Colorado Department of Transportation Revitalizing Main Streets program, seeking your consideration to apply for that grant as well as to commit funds to that grant. I should say upfront that this request has been expedited and is before you today at work session and tomorrow night at council. We recently had met with the CDOT Director who encouraged us to think creatively and apply for this program. CDOT is looking for rural communities in Colorado to apply, to kind of spread that wealth outside of the urban areas. So when that opportunity came up, we thought it would be great to apply for it. We are looking at applying for this grant for revitalization of West Main Street with a complete streets approach, meaning that it would include amenities for bicyclists, pedestrians, safer crosswalks, possibly medians, et cetera. We're currently working with Heers Associates through this process. We've been working with Heers over the last, actually, three years on our Brownfields grant, a separate grant. And through that grant, we have been able to look at West Main Street at ways to improve it. And so with them already on board, it worked out perfectly for them to assist us with this conceptual design for this grant application. So as part of Colorado's COVID-19 Recovery Plan, this program, the Revitalizing Main Streets program, was developed. We've already actually received funds from this program in the past for the temporary plaza that was just right outside of this building. And so they've allocated more funds, approximately about $30 million in funds through two different programs. We would be applying under the larger safety infrastructure grant, and this is for grants of up to $2 million. So again, this program was created to improve Main Street areas or areas in downtowns, to make them more pedestrian-friendly, bicycle-friendly, to support economic development, in a way get people back to a new normal, to improve, again, access to those areas. And it's community-focused, focused on areas, again, that are downtown and close to where people workshop and dine. These areas are an economic hub for many communities across Colorado, and so this is the reason why this program was created. With the City of Montrose, city staff, we anticipate or intend to apply for a grant of up to $2 million, again, to improve the West Main Street corridor. This corridor is essentially from the West Main Street Trailhead east to Townsend. Right now, we're looking primarily, and this is all dependent upon funding, we're working on final cost estimates for the application, but we're looking at doing primarily improvements from the Trailhead east to Grand Avenue. If there is additional funding available, we might look at farther going down Main Street towards Townsend, but we wouldn't be looking at major improvements in that area because of the existing infrastructure, which would make it really challenging. So from about, I think it's Grand to, let me pull it up here on my computer, Grand to North Selig, we might be looking at doing like pedestrian or bicycle lanes, for example, and a possible bicycle station to dismantle, since it is a little more complicated to get through that Townsend and Main area. But those are some specifics that we're still working through. I guess nothing is really finalized at this point. We're just doing the conceptual design ideas for the application. The actual improvements will be finalized if a grant is awarded. We'll go through the actual design process, construction design. Again, this is focused on complete streets, making it more user-friendly for pedestrians, bicyclists, motorcyclists, transit users, vulnerable populations, people with disabilities, the elderly, and improving that area, as well as improving the look of the area, the aesthetics, and encouraging economic development. The grant application is due on May 14th, so that's coming up very quickly, which is why we are working with Heers Associates to assist with this grant application. They've been very great at doing that. Again, the West Main Street corridor from approximately the Trailhead east to Grand Avenue with potential improvements farther east as well. Looks like I've covered most of this already, but one of the goals, some of these, to create a template that maximizes sidewalk width. Our current sidewalks are about three feet wide through most of that section. They're kind of disconnected. CDOT has gone through and has made some improvements that would complement or, you know, complement the improvements that we plan to do. They went through, I believe, last year and improved some of those ramps. But in general, the sidewalks are very narrow. The roads are very wide, which, you know, encourages speeding through that area. So trying to find ways to slow down traffic and make it more user-friendly for everyone is one of the goals. You know, creating spaces for, you know, outdoor seating, for relaxation areas, I guess, with benches, just really overall, think of a revitalization project that, you know, creates a beautiful space. And of course, ensuring that the area is ADA compliant with our new sidewalks will obviously be a part of that. With that being said, again, the resolution that will be before you tomorrow night authorizes the city staff to apply for this grant, as well as commits the city to providing up to a 20% match, up to $400,000. This match would come from Retail Sales Tax Enhancement Fund, the General Fund, Water Fund, and Capital Fund. The project will not exceed $2.4 million. With that being said, I know I've covered a lot. Please let me know if you have any questions. We also have David Land with Heers Associates, I believe, on the Zoom platform, if you have any specific questions about what he's been working with, and we can go from there. Thank you.
I have a question. This seems like a really generous grant with only a 20% match as opposed to a 50% match, but it's with CDOT, and I know sometimes that brings a lot of red tape and a lot of work on our end. And I think, is Scott Murphy here? I think he might, oh, look at that. I'd love to hear your opinion on this project, because I know in the past you've expressed concern that sometimes the money we get from CDOT isn't worth the red tape. Is that even, I don't even, please correct me if I misspoke.
Yeah, you're characterizing it well. Generally, our cutoff's been about a million. So if it's above a million, it can be worth it when you figure in all the time that goes into it and all the additional costs that do get incurred. This project, so initially, you know, it's that plus also having the staff time and bandwidth to do the work. So initially, we were kind of on the fence about this one, but after talking with the Director of CDOT, she kind of indicated we would be pretty competitive. It's exactly the kind of things we're looking to do. There's a lot of money coming down the pipe. And they also said this isn't, there's certain elements of the federal programs and stuff that aren't applying to this project. And so it's CDOT, but it's CDOT Lite is kind of the way it got characterized to me. So with that, we were comfortable moving forward. But that is, you're spot on. That's something we're definitely careful to not, you know, because what you can do is you get in too deep on those, and it can really detract from all the other projects that, you know, need the effort or need the focus. But yeah, we feel that this one, and then the timeline on this also, where this would be implementation into '22 and '23 probably gives us great time to build that into the schedule and make it work. So we're fully comfortable. But thank you for asking.
Thanks. I suppose when you're standing on the corner of West Main and Maple with the Director of CDOT, and she highly encourages you to apply for $2 million, you?
We apply.
We apply. Thank you.
I'd like to say, just when we met with CDOT, that we met with a few of the local businesses down on West Main and some of their suggestions and ideas and requests that we honestly were a little bit hesitant on because we really didn't have funding, we didn't have the opportunity for this. And the CDOT staff and the Director really made some great suggestions, and they suggested programs that, at that point, we really were not aware of. So that was why the kind of the expedited timeline on this is because we weren't aware of these programs to start with. And they had some suggestions that we had never thought of. So it's been a really beneficial, our local CDOT staff here in Montrose has been really great to work with on this.
Kendall, once we apply for this, but what's the approximate timeframe before we would find out?
We would find out between June and July, and then they would begin contracting. And then I believe you have up to three years to implement the project, I believe, two or three years.
Thanks for the expedited work on this. Sounds like a great idea.
It was certainly a team effort from all of our city staff, and a huge shout out to Heers Associates for helping us out on this. They've really put some things aside to help us put together a strong grant application that will be going in. I should also note there will be more opportunities for engagement, you know, if we get this award, for the public as well as business owners in that section and community-wide, to provide their feedback on the improvements that they would like to see.
Will the CDOT staff be involved also in the design elements of this program?
That would be a Scott Murphy question. I believe they would most likely be involved.
Yeah, Scott says yes.
Scott says yes.
All right. Thanks, Kendall. Any other questions, Council? All right. We'll go on to the next item, B, the lease agreement for 703 South Ninth Street.
Can you hear me? All right. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thanks for having me today and thanks for your time today. I'm here to put forward a request that we start a lease agreement for the property, city property at 703 South Ninth Street. The city owns the property at 703 South Ninth Street, and it is the former Passage Charter Schools, current, or the location of the former Passage Charter School. And this property is actually now in the hands of the Montrose County School District. And what we're looking to do is to establish a new lease with the Montrose County School District for five years, and this includes use of the city property there. And the building is under the ownership of the Montrose County School District. Are there any questions after looking through the memo and the attached agreement?
So the Passage Charter School was dissolved?
Yes.
So what is the use that they're going to put that building to?
So now it's going to be the, or it is, the Step Up to Life Charter School, and that works with persons with disabilities and kind of gets them adjusted and trains them to complete basic, I guess, needs. So any person with disability might get an education as far as how to conduct different tasks that might be challenging to them.
All right. Thank you very much, Ross. Oh, we get to use you twice, don't we? Lease agreement for South Fourteen, what is that? 514 South First Street, Straw Hat Farm.
Right. So thanks again. Today, we're going to be looking at the 514 South First Street lease, also the Straw Hat Farm and Marketplace building that's just right down the road. There are two amendments that we're looking to, or two changes to the current lease that we're looking to recommend today. First is going to be pretty simple and straightforward. It's clarification around kitchen equipment, because they just installed a commercial kitchen on the property. And to ensure that there's no confusion at the end of the lease, we just wanted to make sure that there was some clearly defined language as far as what would happen with the kitchen should the lease be terminated between the City of Montrose, who owns the land and the building, and Straw Hat Farm and Marketplace. And the second piece that we're looking to change is an extension of the lease by two years, and we're looking to do that based on the continued improvements that they have done to the building from the exterior to the interior over the course of the lease. And obviously, to ensure that with the installation of the commercial kitchen and the addition of that aspect of their business, that they, you know, are able to kind of continue to provide that service and continue to enhance the building without any worry of terminating the lease in the next couple of years.
I have one question. And putting in a commercial kitchen, does that conflict in any way with any of our ordinances? Stephen, maybe you can answer that?
No, it doesn't. And this has been kind of envisioned since the inception of Straw Hat, that they would eventually, one day, be able to do that.
In fact, as I recall, I think when we leased that building out, we had to take kitchen equipment out of it years ago.
Yes, we actually did.
I hope we still don't have that in storage. All right. The next item is the utility connection fee abatement for Montrose Ford. City Manager Bill Bell.
We are excited today to have a DART initiative before the City Council post-COVID. We're starting to get back into the swing of things with our DART. And just as a reminder, that's our development and revitalization team, which is citywide. It's not just a downtown effort any longer. It really is a community-wide effort to try to help businesses throughout Montrose. And this particular request, we have Wes Abbott here with us from Montrose Ford Nissan to talk to you about his expansion project. It's outlined in the memo. That was included in the packets. And in the grand scheme of things, it's a relatively small incentives request compared to a lot of those that we see at the city or at the URA. I've already pre-approved a building permit, plan check, and construction use fees in the amount of $18,533.89. And today, we're asking City Council to consider the water and sewer tap and connection fee abatements in the amount of $14,200. And that would make our total business expansion incentives package for Montrose Ford Nissan I'd like to ask Wes to come up and just talk a little bit about his project and share his vision with the City Council, if that's all right.
Wes, if you would, state your name and address for us. Thank you.
Sure. Wes Abbott, 60156 Kiowa Lane, and that's 81403. Montrose Ford Nissan's at 100 Merchant Drive in the city. As Bill Bell mentioned, we're looking for consideration on our project fees. We're doing a shop expansion. on our project fees. We're doing a shop expansion. Montrose Ford's been here since 1986. We moved into our current facility in 2001, so 20 years ago. And when we moved in 20 years ago, we thought we'd have all the space we would ever need for our service department. As we all know, the city has grown immensely in the last 20 years, and we've reached the point where we feel like we can't adequately meet the needs of our customers in the city, the travelers. Often, we'll end up being a week, two weeks, even three weeks out for heavy-duty work, especially in the summer, when all the, all the local fleets are working, when we've got travelers. And so we're looking to do an almost 12,000-square-foot expansion for our shop. It would open up about 85% more capacity for us. In doing so, we'd be able, we're focusing really on trucks, fleets. You know, for so many people in Montrose and the surrounding area, their job and livelihood depends on their vehicles being up and running, and to be told, "I can't fix it for two weeks," is crushing for them. So we'd really like to be able to take, take care of the people who use their vehicles for work, get them in and out fast so they can continue working. And also, to be able to take care of all the tourists who come through, you know. Western Colorado is a haven for motorhomes, RVs, et cetera, and when those break down, they need to get fixed and moved relatively quickly. Part of this expansion project, right away, I will have an additional incremental eight employees, making just short of probably half a million dollars a year in wages. Right off the bat, I expect about $30,000 annual increase in city sales tax, with that going up to probably about $60,000 a year in about five years or so, is my guess on the growth.
So this is growth, not just that Ford's are falling apart?
No, this is, this is growth. Shockingly, when we moved in in 2001, the city was about 12,000 people, and now I think we've about doubled.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks for running such a successful business in Montrose, and also the contributions that your business has made to our community.
Well, I appreciate it. We enjoy living in such a good community, and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
So just want to point out, this is more of an investment in our community, because one of the things that Wes mentioned is that adding eight FTEs, full-time employees, and the additional tax revenue, this isn't a gift, this kind of programs. And other businesses in Montrose are able to come and talk to us about this type of incentives as well. This isn't specific to any one group or one area of our city.
Next item on discussion today is general city council discussion. Barbara, do you have anything?
I cannot think of anything, but I'll probably think of something to add on.
Do you have any comments? I don't either. In that case, we'll ask the staff, do you have anything today? Can you believe how quiet they are?
I knew I'd come up with something.
Okay.
I went golfing for the first time yesterday in my four years on council, and it was great. And I think I played better than my husband, which was really good. And it was great. And staff was great, and the new restaurant looks good. And I think probably like every lawn in Montrose, we could all use more water. So isn't that something we all say when it rains, but we can use the water? But just had a really enjoyable experience and interaction with any and all of the staff members that you all have put out there. So thank you.
Thank you. And that's maybe a good prompt for us to let you all know and let the community know that we successfully finished the pump installation project just a couple weeks ago, thanks really to every city team at the city getting that done. But that's something that was budgeted for this year, about $100,000. And you approved for the bid that we received, and we're just so thankful to all of the divisions and everyone at the Black Canyon Golf Course. But you'll see things green up there now that we have our new pumps installed and we're able to run our irrigation water through those pumps. So, thank you.
Great. And is it gonna cost much for turf repair after Barbara played out there?
It sounds like no, but we'll have to, we'll have to check on our husband.
He replaced all of his divots.
Would you like to comment on the restaurant and the hours?
Yes. So I actually need to double-check with the staff today, but this is the first week that we're open, 70s a week, starting this week. And we're adjusting our hours incrementally as we get more staff on board, as all of our businesses in Montrose can likely empathize with. Getting back to normal for staffing levels for every business is a challenge, and we're experiencing that, too. So we've hired a great full-time cook, who you've met, named Lucy, and we have our restaurant manager named Bridget on board, and we just hired another server, starting with us last week. And we're still hiring for positions. So as we continue to hire another part-time cook, and then additional servers, we'll be able to have more consistent hours through out the summer and hopefully longer into the evening. But right now, and I'm sorry, I need to double-check, but I think it's 11 to 6, seven days a week.
Thank you. And for those of you that don't know, we do have a new municipal judge, Judge Greenacre. We're more than happy to have folks stop by, leave a donation.
Actually, watching municipal court on Thursdays is really interesting and entertaining, and that is always open to the public who want to come and see what municipal court looks like here in Montrose. And as you would imagine, that involves things like traffic infractions and bar fights, and pet issues.
It's interesting to go to, but not specifically for the entertainment value. Just very educational about the way our system works. It's very, pretty cool. And I would say it's really nice seeing all of your smiling faces out there. It's like, yeah, actually, humans. It's kind of fun.
Chief Hall, do you have any comments? All right, thank you. Well, we have no additional business. We will adjourn for today. Thank you all for coming.